Application had a site plan associated with it that was not constructed. And then the other application, Ms. Gardi can correct me if I misremember. That they came in, they had to come in for a use variance with an associated site plan which they never completed and therefore haven't continued with their application from my understanding.
So the application before you is just for the billboard itself and we're not looking to do anything to the remaining portions.
Is it the intent ever to follow through with the prior planning board approval?
We're not the owner of the property itself. We're the billboard.
We're just the tenant.
So that's our section.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. So you're asking for a variance for the Birmingham and I assume you're still going to ask for a variance for the landscaping even though you've agreed to work with this. But the ordinance does require landscaping to be provided between Route 130 and the parking lot. But since the building's vacant, there's no activity happening on site, why could you not bring the site into compliance with the ordinance requirements? It seems to me you could remove some of that excessive parking that's within the buffer area, provide some landscaping and comply.
We could do that, but the board is going to have a whole nother bite at the apple with this. Whoever comes into this will have to do equal things. Let's just say whatever company comes in, they're going to have to do something here.
Maybe. Depends on what they're doing, depends if it's what was pre-existing, depends on what they ask for. There's a lot of potential there.
But there's no site plan on file for this as of right now.
But.
You have a site plan from Expert Luxe which was never finalized.
Mm-hmm.
I believe that would have to come back to the board.
But you're coming in now for site plan approval.
Correct.
So as part of this application now, at this time, why not improve the site to comply to the ordinance and at the same time potentially reduce some of the impact of your proposed use variance?
So what you're, I guess what I'm saying, what are you looking for, Jay? Looking for, we had talked a little bit about pulling about four foot back and bunting about.
Removing some landscaping along the front of the, or excuse me, some of the paving from along the front of the property away from the driveways and putting in landscaped island in there between the buffer, the parking area from Route 130.
I kind of look, what he's asking for is to cut paving back in here to add shrubs along, basically headway clear shrubs along the front. Part of the site, this is part of the site. So it's part of the site. So that's what they're asking.
To cut the pavement down.
Yes.
Can you speak up because I didn't hear what your exchange just was. I know you're trying to get a.
Sorry, I'm trying to explain to them what your planner's asking for.
Right. And I didn't hear what he was asking. He said yes or no.
I don't think he said yes or no yet.
He's trying to understand what.
They're still trying to figure out how far.
That's how deep they have to cut.
If you could just project a little bit so.
The concern for my client, the issue for my client, since this is the first time this has been brought up, so we're dealing with something we haven't, I don't think, we haven't had a chance to discuss with him yet, which could be significant because as I indicated, he's leasing this area of property. This area from the billboard is going. He's not leasing the entire site. So you've got an owner who owns the property, who may be looking to do something else with the property, the building as he moves forward with maybe future development. So you're asking our client to take a look at something he needs the owner's permission to do, number one. These are concerns that he has and again, we haven't had a chance to really address that.
But again, these are ordinance requirements. You're coming in for site plan. You're also asking for a use variance as well as a height variance. You're going to be impacting the site. You're going to have an impact on the community and surrounding areas. These are items that are required by the ordinances and some variances that you've requested.
I appreciate that, but I understand part of the issue we're having tonight is we filed this application in May. We thought we were going to be on the May agenda and we got moved to the June agenda. The June agenda was canceled because of the graduation. We understood that. Then we got moved to the July agenda and another application was placed before us, a larger application. So we were carried to this agenda. It's been four months and we just got the review letter last night at 8:15. So I appreciate what your planner's saying, but we, you know, it's kind of like surprise, you know, if we had known about this, we could have addressed this more months ago. So that's part of the concern we're having right now.
So you didn't have the ability to look at all about it today. Now I apologize for getting it to you late, or last night. You know, again, you had it ahead of time. I know I've been able to speak to your team today about it. You know, there's certainly abilities that you could have looked into this and either way, it's still a variance. Even if I didn't prepare a letter, it'd still be a variance and you'd still have to have some justification for that variance and ways to offset the variance.
We understand that. We're prepared to address the variance through planning testimony, but at the same time. But at the same time, we've got an owner involved, we have to discuss with him. Chip was not available to discuss that with him. We got the letter this morning, we had a conference call briefly this afternoon to try to address it, so.
Let me, let me just interject and I, I apologize if I'm cutting you off. It sounds as though there's been some back and forth, somewhat new requests is being made of the applicant. And I know that Mr. Atkins is going to testify later. Why don't we finish up with Mr. Stout and then you, the ones who were not involved in the next, because you have four witnesses. So maybe there can be other side conversations, because I think, I think it's difficult to have a conversation in front of the board when the lawyer's saying, what did you say? You know, they're trying to have a conversation and understand what's being asked of them, understanding that this is variance relief. But so why don't we finish up with Mr. Stout and then, and then you can have a private conversation about what's being requested and we can move on.
We just want to be able to properly.
Understood.
I think it's a kind of, we appreciate that. So Bob, if you wanted, I think the other question we can ask.
Would you take it back to your question?
No.
We'll address that a little bit later, once we have a chance to.
Let Mr. Stout, if you could, project a little bit.
Sorry about that. I just said that.
Yeah.
If we could table that for a little bit, that portion, we'll come back and address that before the end of the.
Yeah, but that's not a question you have to have right now, obviously, it's just something I'm asking you as to what your intent is and if you are still asking for that variance or not.
So to answer your question, yes, we're asking for that variance at this time.
Okay. And then the lighting impact. What is the condition of the existing lighting on site? Does it currently meet our ordinance? Does it meet safety standards?
We did not do an analysis of the existing site, but I can tell you there's, it does not meet your ordinance because there's two floodlights existing on the site, both on the PSE and G poles on each corner. There are forty-five degree halogen floodlight. I have not done any forecandle analysis on it, but just based on the fact of the type of light there is, it doesn't meet the ordinance requirement.
Is your intent to bring it up into ordinance standards?
It is not, we had not planned on doing any slight improvements, again, because we focused everything on the lease portion.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's where the focus was.
But that's going to be your parking lot for the lease portion?
We're not using the parking lot.
How do you maintain the billboard then?
We'll get into the billboard usage from the check, sorry, since that's.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not talking about the use variance itself, but I'm saying if, if use variance gets approved, you're going to need to maintain that billboard. There may be emergency vehicles that may need to go to the site, police may be, need to look at the site. Without proper site lighting, how would that be addressed?
We have not looked at the lighting at this point in time.
Okay, and you're, so then are you asking for relief, a variance of the site lighting?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Relief and then maybe you'd work with the engineer and the planner on a suitable lighting plan to minimize the impact?
We can definitely work with your professionals to, if we get to that point, we can definitely.
All right, well, that's a different point, though. Are you going to ask for the variance or agree to provide the lighting?
We are asking for the variance at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's one other point that I wanted to bring up under the utilities section of my letter, seven C in regards to the existing pipe that is, that is on the property. I know it was, it was noted that the pipes that remain, that we requested that it be updated on your plan accordingly. Do you agree to, that's seven, seven C? So this was, this, this ties back into the, what was shown on the Expert Luxe one. This is the pipe that's adjacent but next to the septic field. It's like running, running along the property line you have indicated on here.
I'm not, I'd have to take a look at.
Yeah.
We'll address whatever needs to be done for that pipe because that's in our area, yes, we will take care of that.
Thank you.
I beg to look down, step closer to look in here. All right, you could state your full name and address the question.
It's William Chet Atkins, four four one, Winter, Usters Drive, Morristown, New Jersey, oh eight oh five seven.
And did you hear my introductory statement during the sort of testimony to the vice president of Stoudt? Was my introduction and Mr. Stout's testimony true to the test of your knowledge?
Yes.
And you are the things that get right at the site, that we are, we're only leasing a small portion of the site, there is an access right there. Okay, so that goes to the question for the board member, you're just leasing a small portion with access right there as part of that, correct? You are the president and CEO of the African CA Enterprises, correct? And you and your company have significant, significant experience in developing billboards in New Jersey plus other states such as Pennsylvania, Delaware, New York, Florida, California, correct?
Correct, thirty-five years.
Very good, and in fact, you received one, one application, you had received approval from this board back in twenty twenty-two, correct? And where was that billboard located?
It's down where the Dollar General store is. It's a, a shopping center down toward the Dollar General stores.
Very good, and you have since sold your interest in that.
Correct.
Correct, you have no interest in that though. Is twenty-nine thirteen one thirty, in your opinion in particular, well suited for this proposed billboard?
Perfect, in fact, we applied to the state, the state told us we were three feet short, the next, the next property would be permanent. So the state gave us a permit.
So you have an NJ DOT permit, correct, for this billboard, in your possession?
No.
No, you haven't, not, no, you said you have.
Yes.
Okay, you're, that's your, no, you don't have it. And you'll be, you are leasing this area of the billboard, you do not own the property.
You're selling the property, they're selling the property.
Very good, so you're just leasing this one small piece.
Correct.
And the existing building is currently vacant with no current use, correct?
Correct.
So the proposed billboard at this time would be the only active use of the site, correct?
Correct.
And now the site is surrounded mostly primarily by commercial property, correct?
And industrial.
So commercial and industrial is what surrounds it. Do you see any negative impact of this billboard on the commercial, surrounding commercial and industrial property?
On whatsoever, in fact, we're not allowed to build signs for the state unless it's commercial industrial.
Very good, and will you be offering advertising space, free advertising space as may be requested by Delaware township?
Yes, we're offering a space, we do it with all our towns, we offer a spot every, seven hundred times a day. The, the town can advertise whatever they want, as long as it's not commercial advertising. And we're allowed to do that. And the town can use it for, you know, car washes or parades or whatever you want. And we can, we, we teach the town how to do it, so they actually know it from their computer.
Very good, and you'll also allow for use for weather alerts, emergency alerts, amber, silver alerts, all of that. Will local businesses be able to advertise on this billboard?
Correct, a lot. In other words, the, the digital signs allow for local businesses because it's not as expensive as, as having one sign for twelve months a year. And what happens is the local business can use this and if it's a bar, if it's a restaurant, if it's a card store, they can change that message every day if they like. So it's, it's fantastic, it's like, you know, I mean, they love it, advertisers absolutely love it.
Will the billboard be consistent with New Jersey regulations in that there's at least three, three thousand foot minimum distance between this proposed billboard and any.
And the digital.
Color billboard, so you will comply with those regulations, right? And you are at least three, uh, feet distance between.
Oh, yes.
Will the billboard be constructed in keeping with all applicable regulations?
Absolutely.
And have you received, if you are desperate, you receive the NJ DOT provision, allow the billboard adjacent to Route one thirty, correct? Let's talk about what tax, taxes get paid to the township for an approved billboard, how does that work?
Okay, it's between the, it's between the state and the town, the town applies with the state and the state has a percentage which the town collects from, it's a, it's like a separate line item, it's billboard tax. So whatever the billboard is taxed, we pay for it. The owner, owner of the property doesn't even pay for it, we do.
And, and you.
But it's a separate thing and it'll be very, very clear, you know, what the tax is.
And if approved, you'll sit down with the tax office and get the forms and the taxes be filled out so that they get that.
Yeah, but it's really between the town and the state, but I can, you know, I don't advise on what to do.
The sole advice. Very good.
So is it fair to say that the, that it's a tax paid to the state, but the township gets reversed a share back from the state?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll help the tax assessor prepare those documents, thank you.
It's changed a lot over the last few years and people never used to pay taxes for years for the, for the billboards. Now, now that, you know, it's, it's an item that is definitely everywhere we go. And we've, we've actually helped to, to develop that for the town.
Been doing this for thirty-five years, correct? Is this billboard what you would consider to be a state-of-the-art billboard?
Yes.
I know we're going to hear your testimony, Dr. Pius, about how it operates, but in your opinion, is it, how, how simple is it to construct? And what will it be constructed of?
Steel, everything is steel. We, we bring in the pipe, the pipe goes down approximately twenty feet into the ground with concrete. So it is going to be very, very strong. And in fact, they've made them stronger since there was a hurricane down in Louisiana a few years ago and some were knocked down the other hurricane. So it's really, it's built very, very strong. The, the digibles are also steel and they are going to be very high up here. So it's, it's something that, that the lighting Dr. John talked about. It, it's basically designed so it's not too dry. Driving people, people are going to be staring at it because it's so bright. In the daytime, it's actually brighter than the, the nighttime because of the sun knocks out some of the, some of the brightness of the sign. But not the, not the doctors, Dr. John is the expert.
The expert. We'll test plans, all right, very good. So structurally, hurricane force winds decided to.
Truck would run into it.
And any concern, all the years you've been building billboards, you've addressed billboards, any, any, they've never issued a fire or anything related to the billboard?
Um, the old woodmans.
But not the new, just the old structure?
It's kind of hard to get a steel roof to start a fire.
That's the only person I have for, for Mr. Atkins.
All right, thank you, any comment from our professionals?
I just wanted to circle back to the one question I had regarding to in three days and breakfast today, intent to abandon any of the previous approvals. I, I understand that you guys don't represent the owner. I'm looking at the plans that were approved back in December of twenty-one. And the proposed location is in direct conflict with the improvements that were part of that plan. Just wanting clarification for that, solely intent, I don't know if something you could answer.
I believe that they've dropped that plan because the people that were assigned a lease to take over that property backed out. In fact, there's another company in there, I'm not fully aware of it, but I can get Mr. Senior, the owner, on the phones and I, I can.
We have his consent to file the application, so this application will be filed with his four percent, four percent of how this is being laid out. And there's also a lease in place, this area that you're paying money on, correct? So.
No, we don't have to pay it until we get.
Well, you don't have to pay it until it's approved, but you're paying on that, but there's a lease that's been signed. So the owner's fully aware of us being here, why we're here, the exact position, the location of this billboard and, you know, how it's going to be addressed.
I did ask, I did ask the owner, are you proceeding with that, because when I did a title search, I, I found some things that like we were talking about, he said they're not proceeding with that. So I had to get that in writing if you need to or, you know, the owner.
Well, so if, if this is a site plan on the same property that sort of sup, it, it would seem to supersede the prior approval. It's not, you didn't present it as an amendment, it's just a new applicant, applicant. The old one was never perfected and constructed, so they don't have to really abandon it, it just, it goes away. Be by operation, I think of law, if this were to be approved, because it's going to.
Supersede what's pretty soon. No, I agree with that and then, again, that's why the owner gave open consent for us to proceed with this application.
Did you discuss with the owner at all, whether or not this would conflict with prior rules? I didn't sort of wear it.
Yeah, discussed with the owner.
Title search and everything was there, so I had to ask him the questions, however.
And the owner indicated to you that this is never going to move forward and they have hooked you actually.
Just trying to sell the property. Sure. It's going to be the right.
Yeah.
Sure.
Question break, do you have any provisions in your lease for when the property does get sold, but to the owners? Excuse me? Do you have any provisions in the lease for when the property does get sold, if it does.
Those are new ones.
They just transfer some of them, kind of.
There's usually, if the bill, billboard is not, that use is abandoned, then there's usually some, there's wind down. You know, that doesn't happen, but there are other st, towns where there's old analog billboards that are up there. But this one, I mean, I, I think we do have in, in the prior application, we did have some wind down language in, in the event it's ever abandoned.
Just, just a question, if this billboard, wherever it gets abandoned, you get approved of that abandoned billboard. You have procedures in place to remove the billboard from the property, correct?
Yes.
And that's basically.
Yes.
And you're never going to amend that billboard. But you have no, you have no, no concern if language is put in a resolution that says, in the event you abandon the billboard, it has to be removed in terms of.
Absolutely.
Stipulated time frame. Because that is common, like for that resolution, it's the same way, so there's a, there's an opportunity to make sure that you just don't leave it, that.
It's too valuable.
You know, the town has to take it, right? It's got, it's got one of that.
Yep.
Very good.
Chair, I have a, my question, maybe through our professionals, they commented that this is going to be a tax revenue generator. We, we really can't consider that as part of our approval of our application, can we?
Correct.
Well, you can consider the, the public benefit to the township in terms of whether something like this has a unique revenue enhancement. It's sort of an element, it's not the major element, the other ma, the major parts that are just, if it's particularly suited. It's, it's a small sort of subset, I would say, of that, but it shouldn't be the overwhelming, overwhelming factor for your consideration.
Yeah, we just raised it for the point of just being part of the positive criteria. And when we go here and testify tonight, that we have people with positive and negative criteria to support the use variance. This goes to, to that, in our opinion, those positive criteria, because it is unique in how it affects the building. Because before, as the testimony provided, the taxes were paid on these type of things. State now has a procedure in place that allows the township to concede a benefit.
What's the township has to follow up with the question.
It's incumbent on the township to deal with it, but we'll make, we'll, we'll make sure that, that happens.
Yeah, good question, Ken, thank you. Any other common or questions from our programers, professionals?
I have a few, so. What determines the size, I mean, obviously, there's multiples of size of billboards. And you have, what is fourteen by forty-eight, is that what I?
Correct, that's a standard size all over the country.
That's a standard size, but you wouldn't be opposed to making it smaller?
Excuse me?
Would you be opposed to making it smaller?
It's not really appropriate because we, like, we, we sell the sign and they, it's an exact size. And we do see smaller signs, but these fourteen by forty-eights are what is being built all over the country and everywhere.
So a normal size of fourteen by forty-eight, would you see on I ninety-five, right?
Well, you see it on, in Delaware, right down the street.
Right, understood, that's what I'm saying, like.
They're all, they're all fourteen by forty-eights.
Great, with I ninety-five, fourteen by forty-eight?
Twenty by sixty, sixteen by sixty, fourteen by forty-eights.
Average size, probably, the most average size, what would you say the most common size of the digital ones are?
Fourteen by forty-eight.
Okay. And then, I guess the other question that comes to the site plan scenario. So can we give them all the variances for the site plan right here? Does that mean they never have to comply again if it changes usage because they technically would be in compliance once we approve this?
Let me answer one on one. Maybe.
Maybe.
Uh, if you grade a variance, variance runs with the land. If they have a new site plan that's coming in, it will impact that variance. That would change the conditions in the variance and they have to either get a new variance or if it's fine or a new variance.
So if we grade these variances right now, the next person that comes in there uses it, technically those variances carry over to that one?
Any variance you grade for properties they've acquired?
Yes. So.
But they can exacerbate them.
Yeah, we would, we we if we were to exacerbate a variance, we'd have to.
Underst- well, the owner would technically, not you, though.
Well, the owner, if the owner files a site plan application that that requires variances, they're gonna have to ask for variance for me. Any lease that's graded here is a sign specifically for this one small portion of the property.
But it still goes to the property?
Yeah, it runs with the land.
It runs with the land. So.
It runs with the whole entire property.
Would have to.
So we're offering relief to the entire property for a small entity in a city.
Runs with the property, correct. Now, again, relative to what's presented, for example, he's asking for variance for a front setback. And that front setback that they're asking for is to the billboard. If someone comes in in the future and wants to put a building on this property at that same setback, that would be expanding on that prior approval. Then we'd need to come back and. He's asking for variance for the landscape we go along for a bit. If you're, it's it's a good possibility that a new application may not need to make an amendment to that part. They will get that for the entirety of the property. Again, it depends on what would happen with these.
Yeah, I guess the best way to say it is the variance for name variance would be requesting here is for this specific piece of a front yard setback. The bulk variances are related to the billboard itself, the whole, where it is. Uh, and Jay, all the billboards on Route one thirty all line up?
All the signs.
All the signs line up.
And they're going this. So look down the road, most of the signs down the road will be lined up the same as the billboard. So we're not asking for anything in it, even an on premise sign, off premise sign. You stand where the signs are, you can see that they're all kind of lined up. Unless they're really old.
So I guess the 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 concern is we got a front yard setback so that somebody can now come and do another application and get the same setback. Because of this application, I think the answer to that would be no, because this was specific to this use. If it's if it's related to someone's use, they have to come in and ask for that relief. And you have the ability at that point to say, well, we don't want the building five feet from the highway.
Well, the, I think there's some argument to that. Um, you, the setback, the the variance is running with the land.
Correct. For this, for this approval.
But that's great.
For this approval.
But it's applicable to building. You're asking for a front setback of twenty one, twenty four one five feet. If they put a building in twenty four one five feet, that's expanding on that variance.
Correct.
That's increasing the size of that variance. Instead of being a one point, it's now a greater point. So they would not need that variance. If there's a building that comes back in the future that is setback further, there's an argument to be made. It it's a variance grades grade. Height variance is a D variance. D variances, um, carry their own separate requirements. So grading sixty feet for this particular uh billboard would only be for this billboard because it's for this particular D variance. D variances are uh much more restrictive and much more uh refined than a typical C variance. So they're, they they tend to be different. The height would not run.
With the.
Again, if they come in with a building, it's another sixty feet. The building sixty feet, that's expanding well beyond what they asked for. That would need all the variances.
Yeah, and I, our planner can can address your specific question to then, my testimony uh to that thing, to to address that issue to your question.
Oh, I have another question. Alright, so you're saying now all the signs on one thirty are lined up, but on the heights?
Most of them. The heights are all different. All the signs, like what I've no- what I've noticed in doing this for so many years, I would, we'll try to line up our sign with the way all the signs are so that we're not sticking out. And we found, we found that most of them are lined up. But the buildings are a completely different aspect. I mean, they're completely different topics. You're not gonna build a building with the same setback as your own sign. This is truly a sign.
But now your sign now is gonna be higher than a lot of other signs. So we might have all our signs lined up, but now we're gonna have all these heights.
Well, they're all, they're all different sizes, different heights, different heights, everyone is.
Okay, and uh Jay, do we know how many billboards can actually be constructed on one thirty? If they're all, what, three thousand?
It it's one every three thousand feet. Um, again, our ordinance prohibits buildings. So any billboard would have to come to you. They'd have to meet the criteria to justify its role in the building.
Okay. So it's not a given that everyone gets a billboard?
Not, right. Not everybody needs one.
And then DOT, does DOT have a say in that?
DOT has a lot of say in the state.
D D D has a big say. They can't construct it if they don't have a DOT permit. And DOT looks at the proximity.
And we do, that's where the three thousand.
Yeah.
That's where the three thousand feet is. And we do have that permit. So DOT has already issued that permit for this property.
Alright, any further comment from um from the board?
We can't.
Alright, anything else?
Uh, no, nothing from Mr. Addy's.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to our planner, who will again address the issues you raised, um, I'd like to call John Tobias. He's an engineer, he's PhD, uh, electrical engineer. And uh, John, if you could, state your full name, there's no issue with the record.
Good evening. John Michael Tobias. And I have my own company, ElectroQuest, uh, to say.
And uh, you could please advise the board of your education and your experience, please.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So uh, I have the bachelor's degree in physics, uh, Seton Hall University. Master's in electrical engineering at the University of Maryland. And a doctorate philosophy degree in electrical engineering with the New Jersey Institute of Technology. And then after that, I went to Florida Institute of Technology for business management. That was a master's degree. Um, my experience is uh over, I guess about thirty three years or so as an engineer. I worked for the Department of the Army as an engineer, uh, who's fairly recently retired. And uh, I had been doing consulting privately now for, I think, twenty five years. Uh, I've, in in the context of uh the electronic billboard, I have uh worked on probably two, three dozen of them, uh, which includes testimony to the only board.
So you have experience test applying, being accepted as an expert in electrical engineering by so many landlords in the state of Jersey.
Uh, very much so, including here.
And do we have any objections from this board who accept Dr. Tobias as a graduate? Alright, Seena, uh, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Tobias. Um, you've heard some general testimony uh tonight, but I, you're the guy I think that goes right to the, the heart of the matter of the billboard itself and the lighting of all that.
Sure.
You could just describe this this digital billboard that's being proposed for the property.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the uh digital billboard is constructed on a steel monopole rated for a hundred fifty mile an hour wind load. Um, it consumes, each of the bulletin boards uh will consume about as much electricity as a, as a electric driver, right? Two hundred forty volt to fifty amp, roughly. Um, maybe a little bit more. Depends on the usage. And uh, let's see, it uh, basically, if you could think about it, it's sort of like your computer screen that you might be looking at because it's really, really big, right? So the pixels on your computer screen are very, very tiny and into the eye. On the other hand, the pixels on this are each, I think it's nineteen millimeters, so maybe about this big. And there's about a little bit over, a shade over a hundred and fifty thousand. So they work by having a tri-color, you know, three colors LED and that they can pose a picture. One of the things, I may, I may get ahead of myself.
No, please.
Um, one of the features I know that was mentioned a little bit before is that it automatically dims. I think it has a hundred steps uh, depending on, you know, what the ambient conditions are, so it auto ranges to make up for those conditions. And uh, there's math involved with that, which I can do if you like. Normally, everybody goes asleep.
We all go to our.
I will, I will do that.
It's cold in here. It's keeping us awake. Um, how often will the text or which is changed?
Well, the minimum is uh, it's an eight second changer. Or if you're asking me how long it lingers, right? It has to be a minimum of eight seconds. That's the state requirement. If you're asking me how fast it turns over, it's it's milliseconds. It's a uh, pretty much an instantaneous change.
So no real visual impact, uh, as far as you're looking at it, watching it, do you notice the change or is it a full effect?
Yes, it'll just change, right? So it doesn't uh, you may have seen some, some of these effects on uh PowerPoint presentations. And some where it zooms out or it scrolls over, it picks like, no, no, no. That's all prohibited, right? Under uh, that that's prohibited under, I guess, the state requirement. A a number of requirements prohibit that. So the change is just instantaneous change.
So it's like a static message? It's it's doesn't have moving, does like scrolling text or?
Well, right, right. That's also prohibited, right? So any kind of, any kind of animation.
Okay, so I I just wanna make sure you.
Some people may, in fact, I was on the way over there. I think it's the church down the road or whatever. They perhaps they'll have a little bit of movement in their side or they can do that with uh the uh uh these particular signs for advertising. So there's no animation, no moving, no blinking, et cetera. So if you can imagine it, it's very similar to a static billboard, except it changes every eight seconds or possibly a little longer.
So no animation, no flashing, no scrolling, none of that? Uh, do we have to apply the township's warrants because there is that as well?
Correct. That's. It's federal, it's by device as well.
So as you've described it, this will provide safe reading uh copy for drivers while in the winter, correct?
Right. Well, I mean, that had been studied extensively by the uh federal of highway, I forget the acronym, authority. Uh, and you know, that's where the numbers come from for the change. So just to put it in perspective, right? So with an eight second waiter time, right, if a car is going down uh route one thirty, roughly fifty five, fifty miles an hour, um, the time is going to be visible. So I say it's about five hundred feet, right? So at that point, for five hundred feet, it would be about as big as, you know, my phone's big, but it's about that big held out here. At a point where it would be like about a cell phone held out at arm's length. So uh, that transit time is about six seconds. Right? So chances are, anybody driving in an approach to one of those signs where the text is gonna be readable is gonna, will see one change perhaps. So, you know, it's not like it's flashing and changing constantly.
Very good. Now, as you know, the big issue is is light, correct? How the houses, what impact of lighting?
But I'm here to talk.
That's what you're here to talk about. So let's go right to, uh, I go to the township's lighting ordinance and does this billboard comply with the township code? And go a deep dive if you need to, but just explain how the light works and how it's.
No, yes, I I I think it does. Um, so there's some of the issues with that are, um, I had to come in now. Sorry, drawing the blank, but um effectively, so some of the concerns are uh, uh, light going off in directions. You prefer it off here or whatever. So, you know, most people think, um, well, first of all, it's direction, right? To a large degree. Particularly in the vertical plan, because all of these billboards have installed maneuvers, right? To prevent uh directed pinchment upward and downward. You'd be surprised how dark it is at the bottom of the pole that's lit compared to under a few away. And it's the same thing for the uh upward projection. So that kind of alleviates some of the concerns about sky glow and light pollution and things like that.
Very good. And is the proposed lighting within the appropriate industry standards for this?
Yeah, they they are. But the uh.
Sorry, just didn't rush real quick. Quick question. So I'm gonna steal this question.
Sure.
I'm gonna say a question. So you just spoke to her and I can see the opportunity to ask the question. So the record in your billboard, you'd be surprised how dark it is, but a hundred feet away is different story. What is, what is the light's village of all of it? Because, you know, ob- obviously, the next uh property prior to getting to the uh Four Seasons market is roughly four hundred feet away. Or is that a.
So I have to.
Diagnosing itself.
My number isn't like a, so I I have to defer to uh, right? So typically, what I'll, um, there's a number of studies that are done. And so I've talked at the uh uh information from the manufacturer of the uh uh of the billboard watch fire, right? And I've been out there measuring myself, kind of like, they all, they all come up pretty close. So I've I've studied this in great detail. So and I have to look at my chart here for the numbers because I don't remember them all. So just to give you an idea, when I say it surprises me, Doc, I mean comparative.
Can you speak into the mic a little bit closer?
Sure, I mean. The uh, uh, yeah, it it comparatively dark. So in other words, if I'm standing, it's also gonna depend on which angle you view it, right? So if you can imagine it at a range of um about a hundred feet, we go up to half a foot candle. That's impending. So just to put that in perspective, where I'm standing now, I can measure an amplitude I have, I guess it's twenty feet foot candle. In fact, it's a cube seat over there in the third row. I measured it as about a foot handle, half to a foot handle. If you're under a street light typically, a couple of foot handles depending on the street light. So to put that in perspective, right, I mean, once you, uh, walking in from that hundred foot spot, right? You can actually kind of see a line of demarcation where the, you can imagine it, the lumbar shields the light. So again, going back to uh what was talked about before. And that was uh, it it is difference depending on what the angle. So the amount of light that hinges at an angle is very different. So what I do is I use my phone as a prompt for this, right? So if you're looking at it steady on, this is, you know, nice picture of the, that's what we'll see. But if you can imagine that, and especially if you're looking at it across from route one thirty, and I think it's ten the apartments, maybe something like that. Town on, at a range of five hundred seventy feet, this is what you see, right? More itch on it, right? So just by, you can see that the amount of light that's gonna come off of that is somewhat less. In fact, we're down in the hundreds of a foot candle that inch at that rate. So I think, you know, most, most ordinance, I don't think yours does specifically. Uh, they call for um, you know, something like a foot candle or two at the property line or whatever. But yeah, this is.
Typical, typical parking lot, like say, I have a little foot candle, something like that.
I believe Jordan's calls for at least a quarter of a foot candle, right?
Do you have a um photometric map associated with this billboard that would show the light density from the billboard?
I don't like one. Um, the closest thing I have is my chart. I I could easily do so.
I mean, yeah, typically when we get lighting plans, we'll have that, um, yeah, but it allows us to evaluate the impact on the case of properties. Understanding billboards tend to be kind of a little different than your typical area, like, you know, a parking lot. They are directed, they are much more controlled. Um, you do have a lot of variables with billboard lights. The ordinance basically prohibits, you know, impact on the case of properties, uplighting, glare, unnecessary light pollution, uh, and lights not above the ninety degree horizontal plane. How will this billboard impact the.
Well, I think I spoke of most of them already, right? So light pollution, I spoke of with the lumbar is in the cutoff, right? So it's effectively a cutoff.
And that, I'm sorry, but that'll cut it off above ninety degrees?
Um, when you say above ninety degrees, precisely what you mean.
So that light says.
Oh, so it's not going to.
It's not going up. Basically, we're not, we're trying to go more dark sky.
No, I I I completely understand. So, um, I think that, um, not exactly. I I would, I would tend to say, right? So there's going to be some, 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 it's, yeah, it's like. No, I I I completely understand, so um I think that um not exactly, I I would I would tend to say, right, so there's going to be some some some, it's, yeah, it's like you ask an engineer a question, it depends, right, certainly, but um, you know, so I I think that the difference here is that if I look at the general lighting provisions in such in your your ordinance, right, it's for general lighting, it's not for signs, right, signs are meant to be seen. So even if you had um a regular, I think somebody called it an analog billboard, I I rather prefer to call it an illuminated billboard, right? So you have a whatever your billboard is, and you have a light that shines on it, just to have it, like using my hand as an example, so it would shine on it like this, right? That's much more difficult to control, right, your skylighting, than it is a digital billboard, which would really resemble something more like it would resemble something more like this, right, or more precise, sorry, more like this, that the lumbers don't stick out quite that much.
But the, well, we we don't have, obviously, lighting standards in our ordinance, because we don't permit billboards, um hence not having standards. But the concern is, you know, again, being dark's gotta be light, reducing the impact of spill of lighting onto the adjacent properties. Even the light spill to adjacent roadways, you have to see the billboard, obviously, but that doesn't mean you're running four candles on to the adjacent roadways. Typically, like I said, with other billboard applications I've seen in the past, we have had, you know, some type of photometric plans that give us an idea of the potential effect. Basically, um and I know that these are L P's, they're very easily controlled, so one good thing about L P lights is we can control them accordingly, control the density accordingly. But you don't have any ability to tell us, at least now, um as to what the impact will be glare wise, intensity wise.
Oh, I can absolutely tell you about that, right, so.
Okay.
When people talk about glare, right, what do you mean, right, so uh what what glare is defined as is a severe contrast in the visual field that causes either discomfort or in some cases uh what's called disability glare, which would be just the inability to see something. Now, anybody that was here last time, I might have done this one, so I'm sorry, this is glare, right, this is uncomfortable comparative, it can make you brighter, I think. There there can make you brighter, so that's uncomfortable. On the other hand, what you're really seeing with the uh with the billboard is the same thing uh that I showed you before with the picture of the car, right? It's a bit more muted diffuse, the um uh property is actually called luminance, how it prevents the measure of brightness, right? So the luminance of this is way more than the luminance of this, and it's spread out over a larger area, right? So between that fact and the idea that it auto scales, it it uh prevents glare. So just to give you a matter of scale, in a daytime sunny day, the number of the daytime luminance of the sky is on the order of ten thousand, what they call nits, or can I offer a description? But we can say that. So the sign during the day will scale up, I think the, I think it tops out, I want to say seventy five hundred, maybe nine thousand nits. But there's no contrast between them, right, so you have a background of ten thousand, it's a nine thousand, there's no contrast, no glare. Now, as it gets darker and the, you know, conditions of progressive darkness, the sign will actually step down that intensity and it's in the bottom end of the pipe of a hundred seventy or three hundred, so it's, you know, far, far dimmer during conditions of complete darkness, uh which is more for glare. But with, you know, seventy five hundred during the night, it would be rather brighter than this guy.
So I guess to understand, um and I got what you said.
Right.
If I've dealt with billboards in the past, and I I certainly understand they are never, never igniting.
Right.
And self protection, good example, because cell phones not necessarily projected, like, and it's even able to read it.
I tried to figure out a way that I could easily scale the break, but it's a pain in the neck with my phone, I have to figure out that problem.
So is it your testimony then, or that there will not be any negative impact or like spill onto adjacent properties from this?
No, I can't imagine, I think that, um you know, well, one of the things we were talking about before was a parking lot, so to your point, you're correct, you know, under a typical parking lot light, it depends on, you know, what kind it is, um you know, a few foot candles, sometimes security, I think some of those requirements might be five foot candles in some cases, where you have a very bright uh uh oftentimes floodlights for security parking lots or doors or whatever. You, the, well, first of all, the luminance of those are integrated inside particularly at night, so any of the properties surrounding, they have any kind of parking lot lights, security light and anything like that, the impact from that is actually greater than the sign after you get, you know, more than about a hundred feet away from the sign.
Is there any light above the ninety degree or no, what the lumbers will be able to contact?
I think the lumbers kind of are pretty effective, and if you were far enough away from it, you know, maybe above, you know, flying on a plane above ninety degrees, you'd probably see the sign, so.
Well, if you're on the.
That's unworried, Bob.
Yeah, if you're on a manual, you'll go see it, yeah, right. We've had, I've experienced problems in the past with car and billboard, um one that actually, I don't know why, the billboard was very, very, very seriously impacted traffic on an adjacent highway. This was approved with that application was that if there was lighting issues, the township had noticed, you agree to work with the township to reduce the light intensity, reduce the impact on adjacent properties. If that's something you'd be willing to do as part of this application.
Right, I think that's a check question, but I think you'll say yes.
I I actually have a follow up question based off of that, exactly, is there a fail safe replacement of signs? For for example, if it's supposed to be stepping down as you're stating, it doesn't step down, does it automatically shut off, or is there some where it avoids that?
It's monitored.
Yeah, so.
So yeah, it, yeah, I mean, basically, like many other things, the software has, it has a, you know, basically built in test. So if if something goes awry, the the control center, if you will, would get wind of this, and yeah, it could be, it could, I've done it during testing, you know, called into the center and said, okay, turn it off, okay, all white, all all blue, whatever I want, to uh make some measurements. So, you know, the push comes to shove, um that could be done even manually if you had to, so that make it work off.
And we would have no, take no issue with the condition that you've indicated.
Thank you.
So back to my question.
Oh, you're sorry, but it was done, I apologize, it was a long, no, that was.
I was attempting, was, um is the, I think I asked you, is the proposed lighting within appropriate industry standards?
Oh, yeah, very much so.
If you, if you want to fly that, can you move more closer to light?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones.
I'm honored.
Yeah, the question was, is the proposed lighting within appropriate industry standards?
Uh y- yes, absolutely.
And facing your testimony, you have no concerns, is the question you receive, you have no concerns regarding light spill from this billboard, correct?
No, I think that the uh amount of, like I said, for that isometric illumination map would show that in a range of uh two hundred fifty feet, it goes from, you know, zero access about a quarter foot candle, and then tapers off as it goes along around the periphery, out to about seventy or eighty degrees, and it tapers down to a very small amount.
I think I thought of that, you said two hundred and fifty foot candles?
Oh, no, I just, I said about a quarter foot candle.
Sorry, I heard that, I was like, oh.
That would be, that would be very bright.
Yes.
That's that's like operating from bright, isn't it?
Yeah, that would be pretty bright.
Uh and you talked about the, I think it's called the auto scale feature, right, that's the feature that we're talking about, which will regularly automatically reduce the intensity of the light as the, correct? And that is built into the system, correct?
Absolutely.
So um both the daytime light glare can be prevented and the nighttime light glare can be prevented through this auto scale feature, correct?
Correct.
Very good, um and this is, what we're proposing is consistent with the billboards, the new billboards that are being uh built and being installed, not just on Route one thirty, but on most of the major roadways, correct?
I was just up at Moose to Massachusetts a couple weeks ago, talking about watch fire billboard, they're they're all around, they're they're pretty standard.
Becomes industry standard.
Very much so, very good.
Um so I I can't stand it, I'm doing something else, um I I have no further questions from uh from Mr. Device, Dr. Device, sorry.
Can you, can you just repeat what the fail safe um measure or re thing that that condition that you agreed to when they were asking about the lighting failure, what what was the condition?
That we would.
Was that the condition? I had asked the board that we have to agree that um they would dim the billboard lighting at municipal request if the township's getting complaints about lighting.
If the township's getting what?
Complaints about the lighting. So if there's any types of issues with lighting, um it's creating problems, in case of safety issues, um that they reduce the intensity of the lighting and work with the township.
Yeah, we're trying to understand.
Happy to, we don't anticipate that issue, but we're happy to do it. Um but the way these are designed, we don't anticipate any issues, but we're happy to comply with that condition.
I actually do have one more question, um is the location of the billboard at the optimal position for the lighting, is there like any difference, so it should get a factor, I think, to serve the same purpose? I don't know if that's a question for you.
Yeah, um what I can tell you, if somebody else wants to amplify on my answer, that's fine, but I think that um you know, recalling the site plan and the angling of the sign and so on, um yeah, pretty much, because remember what I was saying before, as you're traveling down the road, you know, you certainly, and I think Mr. Atkins said that, right, so um uh the sign's lining up, right, so what you don't want is the sign off over here, right? If there's somebody driving down the road is doing just a little bit of sight, if you want it long, you know, you know, given form of access as much as possible, I think. Thank you.
And, excuse me, I just wanted to also state, we're, we are, to the best of our knowledge, we have not received, there's, we're not aware of any concerns uh related to the other billboards, particularly the one that was approved a couple years ago as it relates to any lighting concerns, any, any issues in any way related to to that billboard, and it's a similar company, similar, or I should say, identical to what you have, what we're proposing here, so we have, we're not aware of many issues.
Do you have a setback from that part of the word, front setback?
The prior.
Yeah, the other.
The prior one is uh the luminance. I have, yeah, it looks like it's twenty point, it's the same.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's it, it looks like it's the same as proposed here. Very similar uh applications.
All right, any other professionals, uh board members?
Yeah, I have a good, I have a good question, um I just went on Google Earth to really take a look at this exact location. I'm looking at it, and if you go across the street from one thirty, it's an empty lot, and behind the empty lot is a bunch of apartments, is that Tendi Chase Apartments?
Yes.
And so could if someone was looking out their apartment window, would they be seeing this sign?
Tendi Town.
Yeah, exactly.
On a.
So then it is going to be affecting the residential area.
Oh, yeah.
Well, for the range of five hundred and seventy feet, so what you're looking at is something that would be about the size at that range, if you hold up, you know, you have um and hold it in half, right, at the end of your, at, you know, the end of your arm, and then rotate it to, say your viewpoint is about fifty degrees on it. It's a something you're gonna see, same would be true with the.
Yeah, but but the sign is gonna be lit twenty four seven and changing every nine or eight seconds. So you, if you're, if you were living in these apartment buildings, because right now there's a huge empty lot between the apartments and one thirty, the residents aren't gonna be able to see this.
Well, I I I can respond to that. That empty lot may not be an empty lot, and may get developed, so the residents could be looking out the back of a building, they could be looking at back of a parking lot lit up, there's a lot of things that could affect that in the future.
Right, and also could be.
Uh which would help shield the view, plus this property is not an item on Route one thirty, there are other signs, there are other lengths, there's a highway, all of which can be viewed from any residence in view of Route one thirty, so to single this out and say, oh, you're impacting possibly public. You can say that about any sign on Route one thirty, you can say that about the traffic on Route one thirty, so I just, I just want to point that out.
Right, but we're, but we're charged to look at this application and its implications on the.
Right, and you're charged to look at it reasonably, uh and you know, and and take any consideration.
But also, it could also, it will, one day it could be developed as a park, we don't know, it it could be anything, so right now, it's a clear lot, and these people are gonna be able to see it from there.
No.
That's all I wanna say, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I did have a question as far as like, if I be, of the lumens question, do we, is there determination on how many lumens this distributes? Or is that regulated for a size?
Um I get asked that question from time to time, okay, and lumens.
Maybe I'll replicate the question, will lumens, are lumens dictated by the size? So if you have fourteen by forty eight, propose to twelve by.
Yeah, you're 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 getting, you're you're getting.
Or twelve by forty, or ten by thirty.
So the 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 thing that I spoke of before, luminance, right, is like lumens per steering, per square meter, which is a candle per square meter. So bottom line, and the better way to look at it is, um the intensity, and you can think of it as lumens per unit area, right? So, you know, and again, if we go back to the lumin- luminance, um a street light, and especially if it's unshielded, a floodlight or something like that, is gonna have far more intensity, right, than the sign will, even though the sign, if I add up the whole thing, fourteen by forty eight, you know, take take over the whole surface, the lumens would be quite high, I don't know what it is on top ahead, but the intensity is, right? So you see the intensity, that's going to be uh more of visual intensity pretty high, especially with the area of this. If that makes sense.
Yeah, it's understood, that's a.
That's like the difference between my flashlight and a cell phone.
Understood, but just as a general lumen question, the intensity of the lumen is greater when you have more light? Same as that, no?
Yeah, the the intensity is the same, because it's spread over a very, very, very area.
How about the impact on the actual reach?
No, the intensity would have to go up, I didn't serve, are you are you asking me if I have a smaller sign, is it less? Um might be a little bit, but not greater, simply because, like I said, you have a certain area with the intensity. If I were to have this, you know, big floodlight and shining, uh it turns out, I I did this a while ago, um look at the um amount of light that's uh that falls off uh between a reflective illuminated billboard and the visual, and in some cases, the reflective one is more, just depends on the app. If in the reflected one, the ad copy oftentimes have a lot of weight there, the maximum reflectivity. Good, and realize, this is something I forgot to mention, so I'm gonna ask this question, um the ad copy is, uh you know, all those numbers I gave, it assumes a perfectly light screen, right? It'll never be a perfectly light screen, because it's not useful, it doesn't convey any information. So, you know, if you, most of your background is, for example, green, it's about maybe a third of that, red is a little bit less, blue is a little bit higher, the whole numbers I gave, it assumes a a situation that really never occurs, or the closest it gets is the billboard, the white background, and whatever it takes on. It'll never be a perfectly white screen, cause it's not useful, it doesn't convey any information. So, you know, if you, most of your background is, for example, green, it's about maybe a third of that, red is a little bit less, blue is a little bit higher, the whole number that I gave you assumes a, a situation, that really never occurs, or the closest it gets is the billboard, the white background, and whatever it affects on. So, to make a whole story short, right, nobody ever specifies these things in terms of lumens, right, because it's not, it's a less meaningful measurement in a comparative.
Understood, thank you.
But is there a standard foot candle calculations to potential impact of the ceramic properties?
Yes.
But you don't have.
That's the chart I was reading off of. Yes.
What do we know what the foot candles of this, uh, billboard will be on, at proper length, yeah?
How far is the proper length?
Sorry.
How far is the proper length?
Uh, fifteen feet on the shirt side.
Fifteen shirt side and fifteen on the back and.
How much on the side of that billboard?
Yes, two hundred, I, I put my chart away, so let's maybe, uh, you know, a hundred feet away, you know, on center is half, half a foot candle, right, so if I double that, it should be closer to, you know, square meters, um, so it'd be a quarter of that roughly. Um, as for fifteen feet, right, now we get into interesting situations, it's probably even a little darker, because we're in an area that's kind of shielded, the shadow light itself is basically, uh, yes.
And that's looking straight on the building, correct?
Correct, it falls off as a function, uh, you know, as you view it on a, on an angle, that value as well, and realize those numbers I just gave you assume complete white screen, which almost never happens.
Okay.
Hey, Michael, thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jerry, this time, I, I don't know if you have any, uh, if anybody has any traffic questions, but I do have Dave Schrock here, we don't believe there's any traffic impacts, but I did wanna follow up in case the board had or the professionals any questions regarding any traffic impact, so, with your permission, I'd like to call Dave Schrock here, I believe he's been accepted by the board on Lumen's occasions, so maybe we can dispense with his qualifications.
Any objections to accept, you know, Mr. Schrock, fair assessment?
Hi.
Any objections, go ahead.
Hi, David, just name and position.
Uh, Dave Schrock, Schrock's associate, professional, you're a professional player, so.
And your license is still the same.
Correct.
And you heard my introductory statement, you've heard the testimony of this board on the application, correct?
Correct.
Do you take any issue or, or, uh, do you find testimony to be true, and that's your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, if you could, um, I know you reviewed the site plan and supporting documents, is there anything you wanna add as it relates to any traffic impacts, uh, with this application?
Yeah, typically, safety, and I think Jake did mention that in his review letter, is the issue with regard to our testimony, uh, and it has been, uh, shown through what the DOT has put together in terms of safety, that's the purpose of the regulations, and the regulations are very specific about what you need to comply with, some of those things part of it talked about with regard to changeable, you have nothing to move, you have to have certain spacing, it has to be in a certain zone, uh, so all those things have been complied with, and in effect, the federal government put it on the states to come up with regulations on their own, so that they could provide safe, uh, uniformity within each state. Ironically, there are differences in s- in some states, uh, I know one of the things we've talked about already is eight seconds dwell time, uh, for the message, some states have a little bit less dwell time, so New Jersey was a little bit more conservative in terms of, uh, when the sign actually changes, uh, to be a little bit more conservatively safe. So, uh, with regard to safety, I don't think there's any issue, uh, with regard to the research that I've done with regards to the regulation that DOT has put together, I've also seen some before and after studies, uh, of sites with, uh, without billboards, then when billboards have been incorporated into the, the overall plan, and there hasn't been any change in accident experience, so I think of all those factors, there is no safety element to this.
And, uh, does the adequate railway, uh, access exist to, uh, protect from hazards or congestion?
Yes, and, and, and JDOT with the permitting for a billboard, there's no additional permitting with regard to access, and I think that might have been the one that asked either questions or something came up about that, uh, and because it doesn't generate traffic, uh, if you did what the average traffic would be, or the peak hour traffic is zero, you might have maintenance that's done, uh, on a, on a six month basis, or something like that, destruction, and that's it, so it really doesn't act as a permit.
Very good, I have a. Sorry, did I, so you're saying you don't need N J D O T approval for this?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, actually, we do, but it's just for the billboard.
And we have that access.
Correct.
So we have that.
Any questions from our, uh, professionals on?
Do you have any impact or any, any comment on lighting, the potential impact of the lighting from billboard on the highway?
Unfortunately, Jake, I didn't bring what I've used in a couple other cases, uh, it was a comparison of what, uh, N J D O T requires us to have for the lighting, have a singleized intersection, and it was like ten times what this throws off at, at a hundred feet, so a hundred feet from the traffic signal, you're seeing way more than what this is gonna throw off.
You don't anticipate impacts on, on third.
Not whatsoever.
On that's.
All right, anything from board members?
Yeah, good question. Um, just how, how was the overall distraction? Um, we're all hearing now distracted driving, distracted driving, and anybody who drives down one thirty, if you're not paying one hundred percent in front of you, paying attention, you're gonna get hit or, or hit somebody, so now with these billboards going up, I can't imagine any worse of an area to make any more distractions than one thirty, so I'm not quite sure. I'm not like, so you're saying they're almost like looking like a little like a cell phone as you're driving by, we're not supposed to be even on our cell phones as we're driving, so how could a billboard not be distracting, and the whole purpose of it is to get driver's attention, so I'm not quite sure.
I, I can explain to you what the, what the studies say, because it, it was, for me, it was an interesting read, it might not be an interesting read to, uh, but the, the, what they studied was how much you glance, uh, while you're driving, what do you glance at, and it just wasn't billboards, it was all glances that you're taking as you're driving along, and then they measured the glance duration, and what became, quote, less safe, was anything over one point six seconds, and billboards did not, uh, function any differently in terms of a roadside glance than a sign that says, exit here for Temby Chase. It's the same kind of less than one point six seconds glance, and so you're not unsafe with that glance. What is unsafe, and it's documented in the studies, are things like shaving while you're driving, on your cell phone when you're driving, they have more restrictions with regards to what you're supposed to do with your cell phone, putting on makeup when you're driving, it was very, really interesting to see what the real distractions were that went over that one point six seconds, billboards did not go over that, so you can almost think of it the same as a directional sign, you glance at it, you get the information, you keep driving.
And that's, that's the say that's been relied upon by the state of New Jersey, right?
Well, in terms of their regulation, right, so that, the billboard complies with the state regulations.
Correct.
Based on that, so. Correct.
Uh, Jay, maybe could you just maybe, is, if there's a reason why we don't permit them in our town, is there, has there been, has there been something saying that why Del Ran doesn't want billboards in town?
It, I, I.
Is there something, is there something why we don't?
The order specifically prohibits them, so they're inconsistent with our master plan, uh, they're consistent with the goals and potential ordinances, uh, obviously, there's, uh, aesthetics, as well as distractions, as well as, um, you know, just conservative driving traffic in general, uh, billboards tend to be, and I understand the point, it's very good, it's very good to the point, but billboards tend to have more on them than just intersection signs, for example, street signs, uh, roadway signs, but again, the goal was to, uh, improve our aesthetics within the community and within the area, and reduce the potential impact of the billboards, uh, so that's.
So, so that is, is kind of actually great, a question that I have, and I think this might have been spoken to earlier, um, the messaging that is permitted on, on these signs, I would submit that versus state to state, because everybody who drives on, on ninety-five has, you know, sees different signs versus to what they see on Route one thirty in Del Ran, is there, is there a, if you can give an example of what is prohibited, um, in terms of the sign, obviously, there's more, more messaging that's more distracting than others, um?
I can tell you exactly what the regulation says, uh, in New Jersey, there's, uh, no allowance of flashing intermittent moving light, so I think somebody referred to it as a static message, uh, with regard to, that's basically what it is, it's digital, but it's a static message, it doesn't move, it doesn't change, it doesn't flash, it doesn't do anything, static, so, so the difference is between a digital and a true static billboard is you can change the message, but it's still static.
But, but is it like, for example, if they wanted to put my face on the billboard, is that permitted versus, you know, the, I don't know, is it, Rita's in some areas having, you know, a random opening, is there, is there, you know, obviously, one's more distracting than the other?
Yeah, I, I think in terms of the, what you put on the billboard, I, I think that's more of a chat question, but, uh, um, if you were trying to advertise yourself as a real estate agent, you'd probably put your picture up there.
Well, I, the, the reason I'm asking is because there's, there's obviously more distracting messaging that can be placed on a billboard versus, you know, phone numbers, hours, things like that, you know, there, there's a lot more you can put on a billboard than you would have placed on a typical road sign, uh, and I can't imagine that having, for example, a phone number, if you're driving, how are you gonna memorize that number, so that I can see distraction, hours of operations, different types of products you're selling, uh, for Rita's, if they're listing all their, whatever, something like that, that's gonna obviously have a much greater impact on traffic, uh, and, you know, with your, if your glance time, so I think what you're asking is, you know, is there prohibitions from you, from the state standpoint, as to the amount of information or type of information you can have?
No, it, it, from my perspective, I think it's self-regulated, the advertisers know what you're gonna glance at, at less than one point six second, understand and, and take it, so that kind of limits, it's almost, uh, self-prisoned, so.
That study, did it include material on the billboards?
It was digital and static billboards, so was both.
But it did include, did it include information provided on the billboard?
Yeah.
See, the thing that comes to mind like immediately is a phone number, you're driving down the road, the phone number comes on there, you're spending much more than one point six seconds to get that phone.
And in all probability, you're not doing that, but yeah, I guess your, your car is doing that, the fact.
Let, let me give you a better example, if, if they decide to flash the score of the Eagles game on there, is, is that, like, is that something that is technically not, you know, obviously not gonna be able to time, but is that something that's viewed as more distracting than one point six seconds, versus?
In, in my opinion, no.
That's if they're winning or.
No, no, I mean, I'm an Eagles fan, but I mean, no, that's distracting, but, uh.
I, I, so, so to follow up on that, I, I, I don't know, this was, uh, I, I vaguely remember this was discussed at the similar application previously, that there was a limitation on what was permitted, I don't know if you can speak that, I don't know, there's, there's obviously not any limitations, it's prohibited, but, you know, we're, so, is the state have prohibited messaging other than the, the movements, et cetera, um?
Work out.
Yeah, like, we, we stop at that in terms of.
Fair speech, well, I mean, there's, I, I, that actually is the operator in terms of.
No, no, no obscene material or.
Right, right.
Like, that really, can't really tell somebody that they, uh, the average to billboard generally spread out, the average billboard, we tell our clients, don't put any more than five words on it, some people like to put the ten commandments, and it doesn't work, but you can't tell people what, you know, we don't, nor, we don't accept like gentleman's clubs or anything like that, burlesque or that stuff, but the, uh, the free speech, uh, people can, you know, it's like telling people what you can't put on your, on, on the television or billboard, it's, it's, it's really.
It's regular, it's highly regular, but, like, it's a point of.
Commercial speech has different limitations than, than, than free speech, commercial speech definitely can be regulated, so they can't put obscene material up there.
Right, right, we, we, I guess the answer to all these questions, the questions from the professionals is, we will comply with the state standards, that's what we are obligated to do, uh, and, um, that's what we're here to present to you with testimonies that what we will do, so that's our, that's our charge, uh, and, you know, whether it's, uh, comparing this to signs on the road, signs, regular signs, my, my office has my phone number, it's been approved signed in Mount Laurel, uh, Mr. South's office had his phone, his sign had his phone number on it, in sentiments, um, these are things that occur on a regular basis with regular signs, so, when I'm driving and I'm looking at the, the places to go, and I see that, that's part of the normal course of driving, this would be no different than a regular sign, which actually probably would be harder to read, and probably be more distracting, like there's proliferation of, of the medical, and permitted on your organs, by the way, so, I just wanna make that point, um, that our charge here is to follow the state regulations, cause these billboards are regulated by the state of New Jersey.
All right, any other thoughts or comments for, uh, Mr. Schrock here? Uh, David, good?
Mr. Jerry, we have a favor, can we take a, a proper break, I have it, it's been, it's thrown off on nine o'clock, would that be accessible to the, to the board, to state of the short recess?
Is there any more professionals up there to speak?
We have one more professional to speak, which is our planner, we'll go through that testimony after the break, and then, then that's it.
Uh, motion for a court recess?
We just wanna go to the bathroom, that's the reality, so, if you'd rather us not, it's fine.
I wanna go warm up for a second.
Yeah, just warm up.
Yeah, it's wet.
Yeah, I think we can, uh, we can make that up.
Yeah.
I'm sure other people like the warm up.
And who do you go to complain to? Just because you have it, you can complain, because I, it's in and out as far as the, uh, the sounds with this. I forgot to bring my heater. I'm bringing, we're getting a group, group fifth count on a heater, um, I'm gonna pull it, why am I behind? I have, I have a blanket in my car. No, I have a couple jackets. Yeah, don't get it. I, I know, I bought this, it just wasn't heavy enough for my, uh. Does somebody not know how to use the air? They, they have one setting, they have no adjustment with the temperature, it heats the seat when. Cause this one, it feels like a factory, and they never, they, when they convert it over to office, they never did anything with heating and after. So my office goes up, so now you're eighty, ninety-eight degrees in the winter time, cause the heat's so hot, and right now, the front offices have no air at all, but everybody else has air, the rest of them are like. Waste of energy.
It's easy fix, just.
And I have to keep leaving my office to get, to get cooled down. Or just, yeah, or put a couple thermostat settings, regulate this, it's a waste of. Yeah, cause all that money's gone literally out the door. Right. I wish it was the same for my, if we get a new. Yeah, that's, that's good to stay fine.
I should go to bed for my grandson. I have a chance, I'm sitting here like dying.
Last time he was here looking shiver.
It was brutal in here the other day, it was so bad. I was in here for like five minutes, and my hands were ice cold. And I went into Kelly, I was like, will it pull, she's like, oh my god. It was worse than here the other day.
I don't know how could be, but I don't absolutely.
It was brutal, it was brutal. I came in here.
Now it always gets you.
Are you doing your, are you doing your, are you calling? Go ahead, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
This is, I'm really freezing by now.
Do you need a blanket, I have another, there's a blanket in, um.
Oh, yeah, I know, we're gonna have to come in with like mittens.
Um, mittens, but these probably can't tighten up here. Like, uh, someone, but Jake mentioned it first, I'm like, wait a minute.
It's not saying we, we, we can't play what if.
Yeah.
No, you're right.
My toes, my feet are freezing, it's like, it was the first thing on this was. No, you would think E-track, and, but that would've been the first thing that they would've zoomed. So this whole, this whole big building, the, the whole thing is under one thermostat. And then the boiler, or something like that.
Yeah, like it is.
Nobody's allowed to touch the on off that there, or, they got like cameras on it, but they don't have cameras, people going out to their vehicles in case they get jumped or. And it's pitch dark. Yeah, they have cameras on that.
You can make this stuff up if you could.
I know, right? Okay.
My husband gave me those, those hand warmer plaques or whatever they are, but I don't have them, I left them at home, and I just.
I have a whole bunch of, all right, I will remember.
Yeah, okay.
Hand warmers, I'll bring them in next time, that would be, if you had them on the palms of your hands.
So, was Dave also gonna be out next, uh?
Yeah, we might. I have, uh, three thousand five.
So that's two out, so, Mike or Mary is out, that would be, that would be fine.
Well, I only have one out, and I have just enough people.
We have seven regulars. Joyce is supposed to alternate though, right?
Yeah, yeah, Joyce can do it, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, two, so only one person would be absent. And two people are gonna be absent, yeah, so they're not gonna go.
So, if Mike or Mary is out, then that would be fine, and. Could, but.
They won't accept less than seven.
And this, this applicant wants a full board, right?
Yeah, yep. They want, like, simply everybody, except Mike.
Is he away?
I think so, I think so, I guess I'm surprised everyone won't be this time.
Oh, we got no wife, we got no wife, we got nothing going on.
I'm heading down to, uh, I'm heading down to West Virginia, uh, next month, like during the time, during the time of the previous scheduled board meeting. I was like, wait a minute, wait, this is during the board meeting? Cause I normally, Thursday, I normally don't go anytime Thursdays.
Okay.
I'm heading down to West Virginia, that's my travel, and then coming back on Sunday.
Is it for pleasure or just this?
Going out hiking, there's like waterfalls I wanted to see, gonna take my kayak out.
Oh, I love, I wish I could do that stuff, I miss being able to do, yeah, like that, I love that. I'll sit down and look at all the nature and enjoy it. Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, would you like a lifesaver?
I'm good.
You're good, okay. Wintergreen might be a thing still. This is not good. But yet it can't pick up the heating while it's up. This is what the guys, I mean, I think this, we don't know how this works.
You click the recess button.
Are you ready for a recess?
Uh, actually, Mr. Chairman, um, we, after our background break, thank you for that, um, we went outside and discussed the application, uh, and how it's progressing. Uh, it's just the sense that my client has as to how book says it's progressing, so at this time, uh, we're gonna withdraw the application when I'm proceeding further. So, we appreciate your time tonight, we appreciate listening to it. And we still, thank you for coming, thank you for the applause, ladies and gentlemen.
We'll, we'll discuss how, how you memorialize that, because we'll need to have something in writing, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll provide it in writing, so we didn't even waste anyone's time, we wanted to put our best, you know, presentation we could, but.
Could you, could you repeat that again, uh, just to get the lights?
We're gonna withdraw the application, and we'll, we'll work with your counsel to provide you a formal letter to withdraw it, okay? But we appreciate your time, we didn't need to waste your time, but, um, feedback is always important, and I think we're getting a lot of feedback, so we appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You wanna hear from the public, and then Mike will, or you can't?
Can we, can we hear from the public on this matter? All right, let me.
All right, uh.
Nick? Just one, okay, one thing I wanted to explain to the public is that that's withdrawn, so we can't entertain comment on it, we don't need to, cause.
Would it be appropriate to open to the public some unrelated matters?
All right, and in that case, can I get a motion to open this to the, uh, to the public?
Yeah, now it's not, no, it's not.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, uh, we're open to the public, if any members of the public wanted to speak on that, other than the previous application we just heard, uh, you're welcome to speak. And seeing no members of the public coming up to speak, I'm going to close this to the public. And close the call. All right, in our favorite part, motion to adjourn.
Whoa, who gave me a motion?
Uh, Mary first.
Second by Dave.
Mary?
All due, aye, all opposed? Good night, everybody?
Good night.
Okay, thank you.
Well then.